I'm Kathy Allison, running for the Carroll County Board of Education, asking for your vote. I've come to this campaign with a concern for the education of our children, especially some regarding the foundational concepts they learned during their K to 12 years. I observe that often schools are being pressured to let political influence creep into the classroom. This is quite troubling. Political activism should have no place in the classroom of young children and teens. Schools should be the place where parents know that their sons and daughters are being taught the academics and skills for further pursuits in life. Pursuits of their own choosing when adults using the knowledge they gained in K through 12 to form their own political opinions. As children grow, they must be prepared with the foundational tools that will equip them as adults to take over the important task of managing government and restraining it within its proper bounds. This will allow them to freely pursue their own personal lives as adults. Our republican form of government is a subject that must be faithfully taught in our young people's history and civics lessons so that they can develop a proper understanding. It is as important a subject as maintaining the breadth and depth of subject content in mathematics, science, English literature, and the arts. I respect and admire the dedicated work of our Carroll County teachers, administrators, and the many employees who make our school system excel. And I am enthusiastic about personally contributing to the value of the education that our children receive. At this time in my life, I can say that there are four things that are certain: birth, taxes, death, and that I will do my honest best to uphold the authority and responsibilities granted to the Carroll County Board of Education by the great state of Maryland. I hope to have the opportunity to work with our excellent school system to retain the best educational expertise possible to raise up the next generations of our country's future. Let's work together to keep our classrooms flourishing with inspirational respect and understanding of each citizen's responsibility to manage our rightful form of government, enabling our children to successfully preserve liberty when it is their turn to take the helm. Please visit my website, kathyallison.com. That's Kathy with an E-C-A-T-H-E-Y-Allison, A-L-L-I-S-O-N dot com. While there, you can send an email with any concerns or issues you would like me to respond to before making your voting decision. I humbly ask for your vote on June 26th. Thank you.
My name is Tyra Bataglia, and I am a candidate for Board of Education in Carroll County, Maryland. Born and raised in Carroll County, primarily in Westminster, I am a Westminster High School graduate from 1996 and attended Carroll Community College for some time where I studied elementary education for special needs. My husband and I will be married for 15 years, and we have three children together. Our 13-year-old daughter and 10-year-old son both attend public schools in Carroll County. Our four-year-old daughter attends a preschool two days a week. I am currently a stay-at-home mom, but before that, I was an assistant branch manager of a finance company in Westminster for seven years. My passion for helping others began when I started volunteering at a young age. I was a Girl Scout and received the Silver Award. In 1999, I volunteered with the Reality Program, helped educate first-time young adult offenders through a court-appointed program about the dangers of alcohol and drugs. I also participated in the Citizens on Patrol Program that year. As a parent, my school volunteering began when both my children attended Charles Carroll Elementary School in Silver Run Union Mills community. My journey as a community activist began in 2012 when Charles Carroll was suggested to close. The community fought and won that time until three years later, May 2015. I helped other community members hold community meetings where we showed others how closing Charles Carroll would dismantle the Silver Run Union Mills community and how closing one school in an outlying area can affect the entire county. Our fight was lost, our school was closed, and our hearts were broken. With the vote to close, I joined other community members and fought in a court regarding the previous Board of Education decision. We lost the fight, but it was worth it all. It has brought me to where I am today, a candidate for Board of Education. I don't want to see any communities go through what Charles Carroll, New Windsor, or North Carroll went through. If more school closures need to occur, it needs to be smart, and any outlying area should never be considered, and the same community should not be affected twice. I have three main objectives: keeping communities together, more drug prevention, and consistency in our schools. Keeping communities together because communities are communities for a reason. When people move to Carroll County, they move to an area for a reason. Reasons could be the neighborhood, the rural farm life, and the school in your area that you're interested in. A community school is just that: a school in the community. The place where there's student activities, family events, meetings, rec and sports activities, celebrations, and community traditions. When a school is closed, it affects so many and it can damage so many programs. This is why it is very important to keep communities together, and when a school is closed, it should not be divided apart. More drug prevention. We have an opioid issue. We need to combat drug prevention at every single age level and grade level. Not all grades go over drug prevention every year. It needs to be every single year, and really pushed starting in the sixth grade. We need to be able to help students that have social or academic anxiety. I want to see every child before they graduate being naloxone certified as well as CPR. Life-saving skills are important in a society. Consistency in our schools. We need to see consistency in every single school. There are so many different issues that fall under this: diversity, curriculum, and security. Every school should celebrate holidays. I'm not talking the religious part, I'm talking the culture part. When children are exposed to different cultures, they are very accepting to diversity as they get older, and this also prevents bullying. The curriculum should be the same in all grades at the same time. Yes, children learn at different levels at different times, but having the same types of projects and the same type of field trips, these type of things can help within the community, and it brings success for the students. With the success, I also like to see students use five hours of their student learning service hours in a small business, especially for those who wish to go into their career in Technology Center, to make sure that that particular course is what they're interested in. Having this understanding could very well even direct a student into what they would like to do in the future and help them with their achievements. It could even possibly potentially open the door for a new local small business in the community. Security procedures need to be the same in all of our schools. Our local law enforcement does monitor all our schools and do property checks regularly. As far as armed guards or law enforcement in the schools, that I had mixed feelings on. Our schools should not feel like prisons. Safety is a priority, absolutely. Our Carroll County Public School staff does wonderful with this interaction and students during the school day. We also have a society, need us as a society, remember to not look the other way. If you see something, say something. As a mom, a wife, and a community member, and an advocate for all our children, these are the important issues to me, and many of you have given them to me as well. I want to hear from all the kids, because after all, they are the ones attending the schools. I want families to come to me and feel they can talk to me. I want to build a better tomorrow, today.
My name is Patricia Ann Dorsey, and I am a candidate for the Board of Education. I am a product of our Carroll County Public School System, having been a member of the first graduation class from South Carroll High School. I'm also a retired Carroll County Public School employee, having enjoyed a 39-year career as a classroom teacher, resource teacher, assistant principal, and principal. During my 39-year career with Carroll County Public Schools, I was able to earn a master's equivalency, a Master of Education degree from Western Maryland College, which is now McDaniel College, and a Doctor of Education degree from the University of Maryland College Park in the area of education policy, planning, and administration. Having spent so much time in our system, I know that the most positive element is the people: the students and everyone associated with preparing them, the parents and schoolwide communities. The people make the difference. If elected, my priorities while serving on the Board of Education will be: one, meeting the needs of all students; two, obtaining competitive salaries for CCPS staff; three, recruiting and retaining quality teachers; four, enhancing the safety and security of all facilities; and five, dealing with the budget in light of student enrollment. I will use my passion for teaching and learning, my experiences and educational background to ensure success for all learners, whether students are pursuing college or careers, entering the workforce, or joining the military. We must provide for all learners: special education students, gifted and talented students, honors class students, and those above, on, or below grade level. We must continue to focus on closing the achievement gap between high-performing and low-performing students. We must support educational programs which prepare all students to be successful and meet their full potential. This will be a top priority. Our teachers are valuable to ensuring the success of all students. Providing them with competitive salaries is also a priority. In addition to the teaching staff, all persons associated with developing students should receive competitive salaries. To continue a successful, diverse workforce, we must recruit and retain quality teachers. We should work to make our county appealing to all applicants. Enhancing the safety and security of all facilities is a must. Students must be encouraged to display respectful, responsible behavior. Safe, orderly environments that are conducive to learning must be provided. Finally, we have to deal with our projected student enrollment and the budget implications. Carroll County faced a decline in student enrollment as predicted from 2005 to 2016, and therefore received a decline in state education aid. The state education aid formula is based on the number of students enrolled. Fewer students result in less state aid received. Over the last nine years, Carroll County Public Schools has increased efficiencies in a number of areas, as well as eliminated programs and departments to deal with declining enrollment. Currently, the decline in student enrollment has slowed or leveled off. The new low is about 25,000 students. As a board, we must continue to problem-solve with input from the staff and communities to prepare budgets that meet our priorities. We must protect the instructional programs we offer our students, obtain competitive salaries, recruit and retain quality staff, and enhance the safety and security of all facilities. There is a lot to be proud of in our Carroll County Public Schools. We have great students, families, communities, employees, and schools. The people make the difference. Please vote for Patricia Ann Dorsey to become a member of the Carroll County Board of Education. Prepared, able, and dedicated to serve the students and families of Carroll County. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Muri Duipen, and I am very excited to be a candidate for the Board of Education. I look forward to working to ensure that our school system is always putting students first. My husband and I chose Carroll County as our home 14 years ago because we knew its excellent schools, small towns, and friendly neighborhoods would make it a great place to raise our two children. They are young adults now, so we will soon be empty nesters. But my commitment to our school system is stronger than ever. I promise to advocate for your children's education as fiercely as I have advocated for mine. Running for the Board is, I believe, the next logical step on my path of fighting for our local schools. My primary objective as a Board member and as a candidate is to make certain that students remain the primary focus and top priority of all decision-making. Great schools provide rigorous, innovative, and effective instruction in safe, supportive learning environments. They flexibly address the unique needs of every child. Despite the many challenges in recent years, we are fortunate to have super schools. But we must put our energy into sustaining and improving them so that students have the opportunities and resources they need. As you get to know me, I am confident you will find that I am uniquely qualified to serve students as a member of the Carroll County Board of Education. I have been an avid proponent of fair funding and more community involvement. I have spoken out at many public meetings and hearings, volunteered for pro-education candidates in previous elections, and helped establish Vocal Carroll County, a grassroots group that encourages all residents to engage with their local government. I believe it is important for citizens to impact their public institutions in ways that best serve their entire community. As a Board of Education member, I pledge to reach out to and include students, parents, educators, elected officials, senior citizens, the private sector, and other members of the public so that we can support and celebrate our schools together. Campaigning already gives me a valuable and enjoyable chance to listen and learn from the wonderful people in Carroll County. I have been very lucky to have had the chance to learn from many different experiences and vocations throughout my life. As the proud daughter of an enlisted Navy man, I attended eight different schools growing up, all across the country and overseas. I dreamed of being a zookeeper and was proud to earn a Bachelor of Science degree in biology. My first professional job was wildlife educator. I presented hundreds of live animal programs for schools, daycare centers, retirement communities, and other audiences. It was a joy and a privilege to share the beauty of the natural world with people of all ages. I also had to think on my feet, keep control of often unpredictable situations, develop and promote the programs, and was ultimately promoted myself to general manager at the small zoo where I worked. Through on-the-job training and workshops, I developed many other business and leadership skills. This led to a second career in nonprofit marketing and membership management at scientific societies. Because of those years, I know how to collaborate with a variety of talented individuals, often on a shoestring budget, in pursuit of a worthwhile mission. I have managed employees, served on and led teams and committees, and worked with governing boards. My skill set also includes relationship management and strategic planning. This will help make me a valuable addition to the Board of Education, given that the primary roles and responsibilities of the office are guiding the vision of the school system, overseeing the superintendent, and ensuring fiscally responsible management of taxpayers' resources. So what are my priorities? I have four straightforward goals. They are: student-focused decisions with learning first, continuous academic improvement for all students, attract, support, keep, and empower our teachers and other employees so that new graduates are ready for success. I look forward to hearing your thoughts, ideas, questions, and concerns about how we can make that happen. My name is Muri Duipen, and I ask for your support for Carroll County Board of Education in the primary election on June 26th. Remember, all registered voters are eligible to cast a ballot for this nonpartisan position, so please do register and do vote. I hope you vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to take the time to introduce myself. My name is Jason Helton, and I am proud to be a candidate for Carroll County Board of Education. First and foremost, I'd like to stress that I am not a politician. I've lived in Hampstead for the better part of 10 years, where, together with my wife Katina, we've grown what I think is a pretty incredible family. I'm the proud parent of four amazing kids, two of whom are students at Hampstead Elementary School, and it's for them that I've chosen to run for office. I've served Hampstead and the county for several years on the Carroll Cable Regulatory Commission, and most recently as Hampstead Elementary's representative on the Community Advisory Committee. It's there that my concerns for Carroll County Public Schools evolved into a need to do more. I've seen firsthand the results of school closure when North Carroll High was shuttered. While my children weren't students, I've heard stories of parents, teachers, and most importantly, students that were devastated by that closure. And now, just a short time later, the Board of Education has begun considering another round of school closures as a solution to their financial woes. Sometimes it may be unavoidable to have to consider closing schools, but this seems to be becoming the Board of Education's go-to plan to balance the budget before they've even given the last round of closures time for the results to become apparent. Instead, I would suggest the Board of Education take a good look at other forms of cost-saving before using the nuclear option of additional closures. In addition, in looking at the capital budget recently approved, I found opportunities to potentially save millions of dollars on a single project simply by exploring alternatives. I would urge the Board of Education to think outside of the box and explore new, more cost-effective ways to do business without compromising the education our students deserve. I've worked in information technology for 20 years, a product of a technical education. It was a career I chose after spending years in college accumulating loans for a career in music education that I would never work in. In this age of seemingly insurmountable college debt and a decline in the population of skilled tradespersons, we need to provide students the option of a strong technical or vocational education. While I highly encourage students to attend college, we need to provide them options in cases where they cannot afford or have no interest in going to college, options that will prepare them not just for jobs, but for highly skilled, well-paying careers. The Technical Education Center in its current state does not provide students with the quality of training they deserve. I've already reached out and hope to work with local businesses to develop new and creative ways to train our students. I myself personally benefited from an apprenticeship. It would be in the best interest of local businesses to work with Carroll County Public Schools to develop the next generation of skilled tradespersons who will go on to work for these companies. The topic on everybody's minds these days is safety, with even our own state experiencing the terror of a school shooting. I don't have an answer that will end school shootings entirely, but as someone who was bullied incessantly during my school years, I could have easily turned out to be another troubled student who resorted to violence. Instead, my school saw the difficulty I was having and provided me with a mentor, a teacher whom I could turn to anytime to help me, whether it be with problems with bullies or problems with algebra. We need to listen to the concerns of students, parents, and teachers, and take them seriously. We need to research the causes of school violence in our area and address them directly. If a student needs help, we need to provide whatever resources we can to make sure they don't go down the path of violence. If something as simple as a mentor could stop any loss of life, wouldn't that be worth it? In addition to providing resources to students, we need to conduct random security audits of school properties. A trained security expert should attempt to breach school buildings in order to point out any potentially deadly weaknesses. This is a technique we do often in information technology, and it works. If we make security a part of everyday life, we can prevent simple mistakes from becoming disasters. Running for office was never something I intended on doing, but the parent and me decided that I had to personally try to be a force for change in our children's schools. Regardless of the outcome, I am proud to have been given the opportunity to speak out on these concerns. If you'd like to learn more, please visit my Facebook page at www.facebook.com/jasonheltonforcarrollboardofeducation or email me at jason@heltonforcarroll.com. Thank you again for your time and attention, and I encourage you to vote on June 26th.
Hi, my name is Doug Howard, and I am a candidate for the Board of Education for Carroll County. For the last seven and a half years, I have served Carroll County as a county commissioner, and during that period of time, one of my highest priorities has been providing the funding and the resources for the Board of Education, because I believe that education is one of the most critical things that we do as a community. It's the most important gift that we give to the next generation, and it will have the biggest impact on how successful Carroll County is five, 10, 20 years from now. We know that our biggest challenges are best met with a school system that is functioning, that is excellent at what it does, and that produces motivated students that are ready to go out into the workforce, or go to college, or just to be really good citizens. In my own experience, I've had six of my children go to Carroll County schools, and they've been the beneficiaries of some excellent teaching, some excellent programs, but I believe that there's more for our school system. Over the last few years, even though we have fought very hard to increase funding at the county level, having gone from about $162 million the year I became county commissioner to about $190 million is where we'll be funding this year approximately, we know that there's only so far we can get without more advocacy for funding at the state level. Unfortunately, during the period of time where county commitment to resources for education have gone up, county funding for schools have really suffered because state funding for our school systems has gone down, and it's gone down because of declining enrollment. At the same time, I believe that there is much too much emphasis on things like standardized testing and changing their curriculum to meet these tests. I don't think they breed the best education system. I think they cause us to utilize a lot of resources in preparing for the tests and actually taking the tests, and I believe it takes away from the time that our teachers should spend in front of the classroom teaching our students. At the end of the day, I want a Board of Education that understands that every school needs to be a center of excitement, a center of energy, a place where kids are excited to go to learn, where teachers have the opportunity to teach, and the students have the opportunity to learn. In the last seven years, we've spent such an inordinate amount of time talking about budgets and buildings that we have failed to talk about what it would take to make our school system excellent again. See, I don't want to just be part of the state average or get a test score that puts us in the range of the other counties. I believe Carroll County wants and deserves an excellent school system. So how do we get there? Well, one is we need to have advocacy for funding at the state level. We also have to have advocacy for funding with the county commissioners to make sure they understand what the needs are. We need to shift more resources out of the corporate office and back into the classroom. The decision for all the things we do for education should be simply, will it help that teacher provide a better education to the student in the classroom? That should be the measure. We have much too much resource for things that go on outside the classroom. I want to bring lean business principles to anything outside the classroom, and the best flexibility for educators to do what they do best in the classroom. If we do that, then we have the opportunity to start creating again a situation where Carroll County schools are excellent. I want the drugs out of the schools. We have to make this the highest priority. We need to get things like bullying and all of those challenges out of the system, not just because they're wrong, but because they get in the way of us providing an excellent education. I believe I am uniquely qualified, having served as a commissioner, understanding the school system, having served as an ex officio member of the Board of Education, to go out and help create the kind of system that we can all be proud of, that really will attract the best teachers and produce the best students, that will get the best results for the community, because I know how to go out and tell our story in a way that will get us the funding and will get us the support that we need for Carroll County to be the very best schools. We need to look at each and every decision, and it shouldn't be about coming up with lofty vision statements and long periods of time to make decisions. Over the last four years, we've had a Board of Education that's talked about education, analyzed education, but we don't have one that has led education down the path of excellence. If you give me that opportunity, I will work very hard to make sure that Carroll County has the very best schools in the state of Maryland. My name is Doug Howard. I'm a candidate for the Board of Education, and I ask for your support on June 26th. Thank you very much.
My name is Kenny Kyler. I live with my wife Rhonda in Manchester, Maryland. I'm a candidate for the Board of Education. I've been active in various community activities all of my life. With a career in construction, until now, it was hard to make time for public office. I now want to get more involved. I am a lifelong resident of Carroll County. I am married to Rhonda Kyler and have three children and six grandchildren. Rhonda, all three children, and I are products of Carroll County Public Schools. All three children have graduate degrees. We place value and importance on education. I have a BA in Mathematics from Washington College. I took additional classes at Western Maryland College, student-taught, and completed all requirements for teacher certification. I joined the Maryland Army National Guard in 1972. I graduated from Officer Candidate School in Towson, Maryland, and completed the Officer Basic Course in Field Artillery at Fort Sill, Oklahoma. In 1980, I left the National Guard as a First Lieutenant. I feel that the skills I have acquired through work in the variety of organizations should train me. transfer well to the Board of Education. Over one-half of our taxes go to the school system. We need fiscal responsibility and transparency. I feel that we can continue to develop a great school system while maintaining our current tax rates. We must promote common sense and transparency in redistricting and school closures. By managing the school systems properly wisely, we can budget to attract highly qualified teachers and staff. I've worked all of my life in construction. I started at Charles J. Miller, Inc. as a laborer, working summers while in school. I was vice president at Miller from 1978 through 2004. I went to Stewart &amp; Tate in York, PA as executive vice president in 2005 and continue there today. If elected to the Board of Education, I will reduce my workload to half-time at most so I can put the proper attention into the school board. At both companies, I've been active in budgeting, finance, estimating, contract negotiation, project management, hiring, and managing employees, and more. In 1973, I founded Manchester Wrestling and became a board member in the North Carroll Rec Council. I coordinated and coached in the wrestling program through 2013. We were blessed with many great athletes and families. The program produced wrestlers who went on to win over 45 individual high school state championships. Many of them also competed in college. I am most proud that our program had an excellent high school graduation rate. The discipline and instruction they learned through sports helped them grow into great adults. My son Andy now coordinates the program. Andy and many other coaches have continued the program and kept it successful. This season, they have five teams and over 100 wrestlers competing in different leagues. While working, I tried to stay active in both occupational and community organizations. I was a board member and treasurer of the Associated Utility Contractors of Maryland. Through that organization, I was active in lobbying and contacting government groups. I served on specification committees and met with Carroll, Frederick, and Bonnaroo Counties and Bonnaroo City. We analyzed their current specifications and suggested modifications that could improve their services but also be cost-effective. I am currently an active member of Hartford County Contractors Association. I also served as president of both the North Carroll Rec Council and Maryland Junior Wrestling League. I coached and chaired national teams for the Maryland State Wrestling Association. I was a member of the Carroll County Parks and Recreation Board for several years and served one year as chairperson. Through the National Guard and community programs, I learned the value of security and safety. Securing our facilities is an important issue. I do not feel that teachers should be armed, but the school property should not be gun-free zones. Our local police should have a presence at our schools supplemented by well-trained and armed school resource officers. In past years, we had crisis counselors assigned to schools. We need behavior specialists at each school who can work with both students and families. I would value the opportunity to serve you on the school board. Thank you for listening to me. I will need everyone's help and support to get elected. Please vote in June and November.
Hello, my name is Mary Kowalski, and I am running for a seat on the Board of Education. I was born and raised in Carroll County. I have a master's degree in education from McDaniel College in Westminster. I have 15 years of experience working in Carroll County Public Schools, and I am also the parent of a 2015 graduate from Carroll County Public Schools. I'm running for Board of Education because I'm concerned about the direction of our Board of Ed. The Board of Education has been hijacked by liberal extremists who are aggressively indoctrinating our children with their ideas regarding gender identity and global warming. The very history of the founding of our nation is being distorted, and our young people are left feeling confused at best. In my view, the Carroll County Times acts as nothing more than an arm of the Board of Education, downplaying or completely ignoring these problems too often, thus enabling them to continue. I believe that we must get control of the out-of-control liberal extremists who have been forcing their political agenda into our schools for far too long. Our Board of Education elections should be held by party affiliation. This will require candidates to expose their views on how our young people should be taught, holding Board of Ed members to a higher degree of accountability. Nonpartisan elections have worked strongly to the advantage of the liberal radicals. It's time to protect our children from those who are undermining patriotism and morality among our youth. I also believe that we need to control spending and reduce bureaucracy at our Board of Education headquarters. Not only is there a culture of moral corruption, but there is a culture of financial corruption. I'm concerned about the reckless expenditure of hard-earned taxpayer dollars. You know, we've been told for years by the Board of Ed that we have declining student enrollment in Carroll County. They've told us that we have less students, but the Board of Ed needs more money. We need to ensure full transparency and accountability. Finally, in the wake of the tragic school shooting in Florida, I believe we must tighten security protocols at our schools to improve the safety and security of our students and staff members. As a candidate for the Board of Education, I am concerned about the safety of our schools. I believe we need to reinstate the federal ban on the sale of AR-15s and similar military-style weapons. I believe in the Second Amendment and the right to bear arms. However, AR-15s are military-style weapons that belong in the military, not in the civilian sector, where they can easily drift into the hands of psychologically unbalanced individuals, as we have seen happen too many times. We need to hold our elected officials accountable at the state and federal level and not let them scapegoat the NRA. We must demand that our elected officials reinstate the federal ban on AR-15s and other military-style weapons. Every right and every freedom has limits, moderation in all things but love. Scripture tells us, "Love the Lord your God with your whole heart, your whole mind, and your whole strength, and love your neighbor as yourself." All other rights and freedoms are subject to reasonable boundaries. Therefore, we must put the safety and security of our students and our citizens first. With that, I'd like to end with a quote from the 19th-century American author Mark Twain. He said, "Politicians and diapers must be changed often and for the same reason." And so, my friends, elections are a time of new beginnings, of hope and renewal. If I'm elected, I will work hard to improve security, get politics out of the curriculum, ensure high academic standards, and monitor the proper expenditure of taxpayer dollars. My name is Mary Kowalski, and I ask for your vote on June 26th. Thank you, and God bless.
Hi, my name is Bob Lord, and I am a candidate for the Carroll County Board of Education. I'm currently the president of the board. I was elected in my first term in 2014. Before that, I co-founded a grassroots parent advocacy organization, Carroll Values Education. I've been involved with the school system for many years as a parent guide, chair of the Community Advisory Council, and the Education That Is Multicultural Committee. I'm a longtime Carroll County resident with two children currently attending Carroll County Public Schools. It has been a busy first term filled with many things, both good and bad. Our students continue to outperform their peers across the state in many areas. Thanks to the involvement of families and community, we have a higher graduation rate than any other county in the state. We have worked very hard, despite many challenges, to improve the education environment that allows them to excel. My proudest accomplishment so far has been that the board has been able to fund its negotiated agreements every year. Our school system is successful because of our great educators. We must continue to do what it takes to attract and retain them. Secondly, Carroll County takes its responsibility for student safety very seriously. We have implemented the student data privacy policy to protect our students' information online. We have thoroughly reviewed and updated board policies for student safety and staff equity and diversity. We have partnered with the Sheriff's Office, the Department of Public Safety, and the Volunteer Emergency Services Association to conduct a functional training exercise. We support the increased law enforcement presence in our schools to make safety a top priority. In the remaining year of my term, I plan to focus on hiring a new superintendent, the redistricting and school closure committee, and the modernization of the Career Technology Center. If reelected, I will continue to focus on compensating our hard-working employees, attracting and recruiting minority educators, increasing learning for all students with the use of research and data to close the achievement gap. I will continue to remain a good steward of our taxpayer dollars provided by the county and the state. I will continue to focus on getting a good return on the money we spend as our projects move forward. I will continue to lobby the Maryland General Assembly for sustainable revenue. I will continue to lobby on Capitol Hill via the National School Boards Association to fund the bills they pass. To learn more about me, visit my website at boblordforcarroll.com, email or call me. I ask for your continued support to keep our school system strong for all of our current and future students. Thank you.